Good afternoon and welcome to the March meeting of the Murfreesboro Zoning Commission. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Linda Anderson. Gibb Backlin.
Here.
David Becker.
Here.
Deborah Belcher. Rick Cantrell. Paul Cross. Jim Thompson.
Here.
Mayor Mywah.
Here.
Kurt Wade.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Thank you very much, Brenda. I first would like to announce that Howard Wilson has resigned from the commission. We want to thank him personally for his years of service to the commission. And we also want to welcome Kurt Wade to our new, our commission, our new member. Would you please introduce yourself and tell us a little about yourself?
My name's Kurt Wade. My family and I moved here about five years ago from Jacksonville, Florida. And I remember when my wife said, "We're gonna move to Murfreesboro." And I was like, "Why?" And we made a great choice, and I'm glad to be here.
We are very glad that you're here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Robert, would you please go over our first, oh, we need to approve our minutes. Everyone should have received copies of two sets of minutes. I'd first like to go over the November 16th regular meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review those minutes? And if there are any questions or edits or necessary changes, please let us know. If not, the chair would welcome a motion to accept as written. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, the chair would welcome a motion, I mean, a vote on this. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It is approved, Brenda. We have a, we had a subcommittee meeting on January the 4th, and David Becker and I were there, as well as Paul Cross. Unfortunately, Paul is not here today. But I think for those minutes, we would ask then that, David, you and I will review those minutes and make a motion then that we accept the minutes as written, or any modifications or changes. Do you have any?
No, I recommend they be approved as submitted.
And then I would second that. And with no further discussion, then those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I think we both have it there. So those are approved as written as well, Brenda. Thank you so much. Robert, let's go over our first bit of business then, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Thompson. First item of business is, address is 440 East Main Street. The applicant is Lisa Ishide. And she's requesting to install a wooden privacy fence behind the main house, which is fronting on East Main Street. And the property she recently purchased, which is fronting on East Vine Street. The map board that you have in front of you, the large one, I also included a copy in your, in your agenda materials. It kind of explains, this is a subdivision plat, so it explains what's going on on the property. She bought the property behind her. She's gonna dissolve the line in between the two properties, so she can have a pool house behind the main house. She's gonna remove the fence in between the two properties. She wants, she'll have to add, well, she, she wants to add a fence along the western property line, which is in historic zone, and about 15 feet of the, of the property fronting on Vine Street, which covers the driveway and that west side. So the reason it's come for the commission is, that part is in historic zone, so we will have to look at that fence. And she's proposing a wooden fence. It's gonna be a six-foot privacy fence. It's gonna match the material that was on the, on the rear of the property, which is a larger, taller fence. But she's, in keeping with the side properties in the, on the, in the neighborhood there, she's gonna keep this a six-foot privacy fence, and she's gonna come across the front of Vine Street and enclose that lot, so it'll be all privacy, for security purposes and for privacy purposes. And we've talked to Rob Balachandra, who's a traffic engineer, in locating the distance of the fence fronting on Vine Street, which this has a small portion on, so it'll be roughly 14 feet from the pavement, so it'll have plenty of people on either side when they come out of the driveways, but we'll be able to exit the driveways and see properly to get out safely. But, like I said, the only part that we're concerned with is the western property line with the fence, and just the small 15-foot section that's gonna be fronting on Vine Street.
To make it clear, the 14 feet that it sits back, is that going to, when you enclose the, what's now currently the front yard of that new property, will that be in front, between the house, front facade, and the sidewalk?
Yeah.
So the, the house will sit back into the property?
It'll be behind the fence.
Right, okay. Ms. Ishide, would you like to come to the podium and please give us your name and your address, and then we'll get going?
It's Lisa Ishide, and I hope none of my adverse enemies out there watch this show, 440 East Main. I don't wanna emphasize that too much.
Well, I hope that won't be a problem. Would you like to go over your proposal to us, and we can ask questions?
Yeah, that's fine. The, the house directly behind it's 431 East Vine. I purchased that house and gonna make it a pool house adjacent, or into the back of the backyard. I just had Hudson do the plaque for that, which they turned it in in time, which is great. And right now, I think my fence in the backyard is eight or nine feet, really. I wanna preserve that wood. I've talked to a couple people where we can preserve it, cut it down a little bit, save it, set a kiln more trees, put that along the side. It's not gonna be any, of course, I'm gonna match it, make sure everything matches correctly. There's already a dilapidated fence there, and it's about ready to fall over. I've talked to that neighbor, and, and I don't think she cares if we just put one fence up, makes it look better. I told her we'd pull that piece down if she wanted, if it didn't fall down before then. And then the front is now turning into the back of the house, and I'm just gonna enclose everything 14 feet off, directly connects to my neighbor's fence. Y'all know him well. Bubba Hudson. And he's given me permission to connect right into his, his side of the property. On the other side is a bar, is a chain link fence. And, and that's what Mr. Hastings did. And then when, when Mr. Hudson bought it, he put wood over, over the chain links. So you gotta, I'm not changing that part, and of course, that's not part of this, but I've had people say, "Why don't you do what you have in your yard, and it's too open back there." Right now, for safety purposes, I want it enclosed. I've got dogs, and I don't want them to kill them or do anything to them back there, so until things get a little bit better, it's just safer that way.
What questions does the commission have of Ms. Ishide?
Lisa, would you do me a favor and go to the, to the map there and show us? I understand the western side, but where, where on Vine Street will the fence be? Will it connect into the house, or go, where the house will go behind it?
Yeah, the house is gonna be behind it.
Okay.
So it's gonna be 14 feet off the, off the edge of, of the Vine Street. And actually, Mr. Hudson's fence is 14 feet off, so it would flow right into this fence.
Okay.
The lady over here has a little picket fence, so it would be sewed there, and it just goes right under that carpet. But yeah, it's 14 feet off, and the reason I chose 14 feet is because it was already approved for, for Mr. Hudson, and it was connected to his.
Thank you.
What other questions do we have?
Maybe you can show me on, I can't, I can't picture how it's going to be.
The fence is on the east side here in this picture. There's an existing, Mr. Hudson's property is on the east side there, and that's his seven-foot fence, and you wanna come across the front of this?
Right.
And go over to that wooden fence and picket fence?
Right.
For 14 feet back to meet up with Mr. Hudson's property, so there'll be a, a new fence going across the house, the, the new pool house.
And which part of that fence is in historic district?
Only to the west.
The west side and the entry 15 feet, which is sort of the driveway section of the existing, which is on that.
So if you're walking on that sidewalk, then you'll be walking along a wall?
Wall.
No, it's off the sidewalk, too.
Uh-huh, okay. And it's six feet high? It'll be six feet high?
Well...
Yeah, that's what everybody else is back there, I guess.
Well, I was gonna raise that same question. Since Mr. Hudson's is already at seven feet, it seems to me that you're asking for six. It really ought to be the same height as Mr. Hudson's and make it the same, so there's less variation in heights throughout the neighborhood, at least in that area, if they're all, then the same height as Mr. Hudson. I think you said earlier that it was seven feet when you measured the height of the metal fence?
We measured the height of the metal, of the, the low prongs, it goes up to seven feet. And he's got the same fence I have in my yard at 440 East Main Street. I would do whatever makes it, makes it look best. It's, it's gonna be combined joints, and I don't like, I haven't moved that, so...
So is the height of the wood, six feet, and the metal is seven, is what you're saying? Okay.
If you look on this photograph here, this is the, you're talking about the metal pipe at the top?
Right.
And the dog ears, too, the wood fence, are just a couple of inches above.
It would be perfect.
So to me, you've got an eight-foot fence in the back of your property now, if you, and you're planning to take that down. If you were to take the height of Mr. Hudson's fence and carry that across, I'm gonna call it the front, the rear now, of your property, and then turn back north to connect up along that side to your west property, that would be all contiguous of one height fence. I think that would look best. I guess my question besides that is that, if you're gonna close that with a solid wall, if you would, fence, are you not gonna have any kind of gates to come and go?
Not right now. I'm not gonna do that right now. I've thought about putting a gate, but it would be on the other side, not on the, um...
Be on the east side, not the west?
Yeah, it'd be on the side where Mr. Hudson's property is.
Okay.
Because my driveway goes...
Yes, on that side, yes.
And I don't want payment off the yard.
You don't wanna, yeah.
So if there is gonna be a gate, it would probably be, it would be on that side. And I probably, I'm talking to them about it right now. I'm really not thinking about a gate, but...
Ms. Ishide, could you perhaps get the microphone, they're not hearing, or go to the podium and talk, sorry?
So if I do a gate, I'm gonna, it'll be on the side, not in the historic zone. And just, just because my driveway from my house is on that side?
Makes sense.
I don't need all that. I got enough payment back there. I don't want anymore payment.
I think that makes a lot of sense, yeah. What other questions does the commission have, Ms. Ishide?
How much of the fence would be visible from Main Street? If any?
Sure. Probably not any, to be honest with you. Um, I don't, my house would block a lot of it.
You have metal, you have metal vehicle gates, and you might be able to see all the way down, but it'd be such a distance, you would be such a quick little glance, I don't think you'd ever see it.
And it appears that, is this vine, right here?
Uh, that is vine.
So it appears that only a tiny portion of the historic district butts vine, or is that, is...
That is correct, 'cause the driveway section to the old building, because she's gonna make it to a pool house, it's the driveway, piece of front vine.
Right.
And so, from our point of view, you know, that which is visible from the street is what we're concerned with, correct?
And then the western side, which is the property line that is in the district, which is that driveway, that little driveway is in historic district, which is kind of odd.
Yeah, as long as it's visible from the street.
Uh, well, it would be visible from here.
Just from Vine Street, okay.
Yeah, looking that way.
Just because the property is subdivided doesn't mean that the remaining property is gonna be inside the historic zone. That's not the case. It'll still, it'll still remain outside the historic zone.
It'll just be this new western section of the fencing and the southern section, that's 15 feet wide, that'll be in historic district. The rest will not be.
And I guess that was part of my problem to begin with, which I didn't know. I thought it was an easement, but it's actually, I had that slip of property there, so...
What other questions do we have, Ms. Ishide? If not, the chair would welcome a motion to accept the motion, the proposal as written.
We'll make a motion, we accept the CLA as submitted.
Second.
Do you have a, a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, you did mention changing the six-foot height to seven foot. You'd leave that to the discretion of the property owner to make that look as good?
I would say it'd look conformity. It will make it look, if it, if it's seven, I mean, the higher the better for me, so a seven-foot would be fine with me. I'm, I'm not opposed to doing that. I'm just gonna make it look good and match to Mr. Hudson's.
I would welcome a modification to your motion then, to match Mr. Hudson's, if, if you're willing to do so.
Ah, that's no problem. So submit it with that one change.
And is that acceptable to you?
Well, I, I don't know that consistency is one of the hallmarks of historic areas, so I don't know that it matters.
You're not opposed to matching height?
I, I generally don't think that privacy fences are historic, but in this case, it's, you know, it's, it's not obtrusive, and it's, you know, hardly visible from the street.
Okay. With that modification then, I accept it. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Then it is accepted. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Our second piece of business then, please, Robert.
Yes, Chairman Thompson. The next applicant, the address is 701 East Main Street. It's Central Magnet School. They're requesting to install a batting cage on school property. This is property located where the previous Central Middle School was located. They renamed it to Central Magnet a couple, I guess it was last year. And what they're wanting to do is, is they don't have enough room for a bat, a baseball field, so what they'll do is improvise and use a batting cage to help the, the baseball team become better. And, and the reason we're seeing this is, the city council and the Historic Commission passed, well, they recommended to the council last year about anything that's going on on, on cities' driveway or public property, no matter if it's a, a public improvement or an object, which this is, it needs to come for the Historic Commission to enable them to at least make comment on, on what's being proposed for the property. Excuse me. I was informed that the batting cage has already been put up, and what they plan on doing is, it's gonna be a mobile thing, and, and baseball season, when the warm weather is around, then they'll go out and use it, and, and probably when it comes winter time, and they don't, they're not able to use it, they'll be, it'll, it's mobile enough to where they can unscrew it from the concrete and bring it back inside. The location of this, if you'll, I think I handed out some aerial photographs, that shows the property. It shows the field, if you see the little plus sign, that's gonna be the location of the, of the batting cage. And I think it faces, it's gonna be facing north and south, so it'll be back there on the property. And what the commission, what we're here to do today is, is to make comments. If you have any comments, then we'll forward those to the County Board of Education.
Do we have representation here from the city?
We do. We have Mr. Poff. He's a volunteer coach out there at Central Middle, and he, he'll be able to answer any questions like I can regarding, regarding the proposal.
If you would like to come forward to the podium there, and please give us your name?
Yes, sir. Appreciate you allowing us to come for you. My name's Brent Poff, and I'm a volunteer coach, baseball coach for Central Magnet baseball team this year. I'm helping with the sixth and the seventh and eighth grade teams, so...
What questions do the, does the commission have then, gentlemen?
So this batting cage is adjacent to the helipad? Helicopter pad?
Yes, sir. It'll be sitting directly on top of the helipad.
Right on top of it?
Yes, sir.
And that's not, obviously not being used anymore since the hospitals moved?
Correct.
Yes, just for confirmation, the, the city has abandoned that lease. We worked with the county, with the county schools to do so. Our lease originally called for us to take out the concrete, pull out everything that had been put in, in connection with that meeting, a helipad. And in discussions with the schools, they asked that we leave certain things, and of course, it's great, that saved us some money, but we did take out the things that they no longer did want, and had restored the best of it. I believe that the markings have been removed from the concrete, so no one will suspect that, that it's still a heliport coming from, from above. So we, all that's resolved, and there is a lease termination agreement that's been signed by both county schools and the city, and, and so we've turned this completely back over now to the school system.
I believe there was a fence around it. Has that been removed?
I believe that fence was removed, or at least most of it was.
Okay.
Correct. Some of it was, maybe?
I think, I think some of it's still there.
Okay.
The reason you see the plus sign on there, this is a May 2010 photo, so since then, they have taken steps to remove it.
I did know, you mentioned that, that the, it would be on top of the existing helipad or the former helipad, but you are adding a nine-by-18 concrete pad in addition to what's there?
I think that was one of the things, that they were, because of the size of the, of the netting that goes with the cage, because it's basically just metal poles, and Mr. Rock can step in and talk any kind of construction, not a construction person. But the length of the, the length of the netting was gonna need for there to be more concrete. And so when they went to put it up, they just, they just made do with the size of the pad that's already there, and I guess adjusted the netting to where it would, where it would all fit on the current helipad with the, with the concrete that's already there.
So there's no extension of concrete?
No.
Okay.
Use a pitching machine inside the, it's a batting cage?
No, sir. It's, we have, just do soft toss and live pitching. We'll have a coach or somebody throwing live batting practice in there. So yeah, there's, there's no pitching machine there.
What other questions does the commission have?
Will you be taking it down once you finish your baseball season in your practice, or do you not do that?
That's one thing we were just talking about, that some of the manufacturing directions state that, you know, in, in the colder months, you wanna take it down when it's not being used, to give it a little bit more life, because it is, it's nylon netting, and it's gonna get enough use during the seasons, but, you know, when we're not, when we're not doing anything, yes, it'll, it'll come down. And it's, it can come, it can come down in about an hour. Is that right?
What are the seasons?
We are currently in season right now, and we'll go through probably July, and then there'll be a fall season. I don't know whether you'll utilize that during the fall or not, so...
So the netting and the metal framework will disappear when it's not in use?
Probably just the netting.
So describe what will be up permanently then?
Just pose.
And please give us your name.
I'm Warren Rock. Coach Powers has put me in charge of constructing this cage, and so, but as far as the, the structure itself, they're just held down by some lags to the concrete, so it doesn't take much to pull, to remove everything, but it's the netting that we're concerned about the longevity of.
We understand that, but we wanted to know, I wanted to know in particular, so the commission knows what would be up permanently, so the framework would remain up 24/7?
That would probably be...
Could you describe what that will look like, so the commission's aware of it?
It would, it, those poles are 12 feet high, 16 feet wide. It's a U shape, and it's just a metal bar, a U-shaped metal bar, three of them spaced, what is it, 24 feet apart.
So there's, there's, so there's three poles on, you got three poles down one side and three poles down the other side, and you've got the netting that connects to that?
So it is like, I'm sorry, when Robert pointed out to me off screen here, that is like what's, what's...
I think that's the original size, and that's when I think they were talking about needing more concrete added, and so they, they made an amendment to where that they could not have to pour any more concrete and make any changes to that, so...
So it's an upside-down view, if you will, in three locations with a connecting rod across the top?
Yes.
Almost like one of those luggage things you get at a hotel to put your luggage on?
Yes.
Okay. What other questions does the commission have?
I have more questions than, the only comment I would have is, I think for the neighbors involved, it would look nicer to have the frame taken down during the offseason also, if it's not such a big deal. I think that's what you ought to do.
What other comments or questions?
Have any of the neighbors commented on it so far?
I haven't gotten any phone calls or anything. I have not gotten any phone calls at all.
Okay. Anything else? If not, the chair would welcome a motion regarding this project?
Well, I'd make a recommendation, we make a motion to approve the project, that we may take the netting down, that they take the frame down also.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? If not, then all those in favor of the motion to accept the batting cage, but that they take down the netting and the framework when not in use, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Robert, what is our next business?
Okay, under staff reports and other business, what the Historic Commission voted last fall was to begin looking at our regulations, to see, to just to get them up to date, up to speed, as we continue forward with the historic zoning in Murfreesboro. We've had a couple of subcommittee meetings last fall, last winter, to review all of these documents that I listed in our agenda package. During those meetings, we made some changes and some revisions. We've sent the revisions to the legal department, and they fine-tuned it even more. And what I sent in the package with all the, the red lettering and the strike-throughs, that's what was changed in all these regulations. We, we didn't change anything in the zoning ordinance, but all the other, and we didn't change the zoning map, but all the other documents, the guidelines, the rules of procedure, the two brochures that we have, and the certificate of appropriateness, the application, we, we went through and changed some things. And you got them in your, in your agenda package. I don't know if you had time to read through it, and wanna make any comments on them. I'll be glad to answer any questions or go through anything in the, in review process at this time.
I would add that David Becker and Paul Cross and I met, and we had some additional members from the commission at those meetings, so others have participated in those, as well as people from, from the outside public. I think it was, they've been great sessions, and we appreciate the cities going through this carefully and doing some housekeeping and cleaning and grammatical improvements and this kind of thing. We could certainly go item by item. I think that would be a fairly lengthy meeting going into very late tonight. I don't really wanna propose that.
Have we ordered dinner?
Yeah, we have, pizza's brought in or something. But I would welcome, if you'd like maybe to make this brief, because I think the next step, once this commission approves this, and hopefully we can do that today, if we, as a group feel like we need to have full commission participation, then maybe we need to come back on this, but I would love to see this move forward to where we can have a public hearing, like we've had in other things in the past, so that the public would have an opportunity to see these changes and hopefully give us information that we can then incorporate to move forward to get city council and planning commission approval. What does the commission, what is the favor of the commission then? What would y'all like to do?
Well, I've only, I went through all the, the changes, and I only saw one issue on page six that I think...
Which, which document?
The, the Historic Zoning Questions and Answers, page six.
Just one moment, page six?
The next, the last one.
Mine only has four pages as well, David, and is it page four?
No. Okay, Historic Zoning Questions and Answers, you only have, let's see, maybe there's another one involved here. I'm sorry, it's the Guidelines for Alterations and Additions.
One moment, please.
Page six. Finally.
Okay, the second document, page six, okay?
The third paragraph, we have taken out, it says contemporary design for alterations and additions. The and additions was taken out, but then in the very next sentence, we indicate that the existing property shall not be discouraged when such alterations and additions, so I think we need to be consistent and take additions out in both sentences.
Can you, or read it as, as you would propose then?
Well, it, it should read just as the first sentence, but it should read, "shall not be discouraged when such alterations do not..." It's just being...
It's not the second sentence, but the second line of that paragraph, so yes, I see your point. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Becker, if I may comment, I think I'm the one that pulled those out, because the definition, talk of alteration is a change, the addition, the repair, reconstruction, addition, so all of that seemed to be covered in the definition of alteration, and it, it struck me that we were then talking about alteration or addition, but without then saying change and the other things in there, so I... So I believe I'm the one who struck out the, the addition part of that, because, because it's covered by the definition, and I think I just missed that one.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Yes. That's a very good catch, though. Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
What other comments or edits? I, I looked it over, and I thought it was, and thank you for your hard work, Ryan. I know it was a little hard.
I had no other, no other issues. Everything was much in line with what we discussed in the smaller meetings. Everything seemed to flow fine, and I like Robert's new COA format flows, flows fine. Another thought I had would be after this commission approved it, where we would schedule a public clear, hearing, and David, we'll need your input on this, for sure. But being that it's only the people in the historic zone that have an interest in this, should it be, should the hearing be just for those folks in the zone, or should it be for the whole county? I mean, I don't know.
Well, I would think certainly that the people affected who live there would have the most interest in it, but other people could very easily have an interest, people who might be buying in there later, or I'm sure there, there may be someone who thinks we shouldn't have a historic district, and they might wanna come speak against it. It is something that does, to some extent, affect all of us, but more so certainly the people who are there and immediately adjacent to it. So I wouldn't think we'd wanna re-approve it, but I would certainly think that's where most of the interest would come from.
I felt that way, too, but it just sort of dawned on me that maybe.
Of course, we would probably use these as a measure if we were going to create another historic district, we probably would start here.
I would think so, yes.
To spring forward to other documents that may be crafted just to reflect that neighborhood. You always go back to what you've already done. Everybody does that.
We, it's much easier to start with, rather than with something other than a blank piece of paper, but of course, that's also dangerous, because sometimes you miss things you should change. But, yeah, I would, again, I would think that the, the people here are gonna be most impacted and most interested, but others, I wouldn't think we would wanna cut out input from anyone else, regardless, positive, negative, or any other.
I agree. I think there's probably a lot of interest in, in historic preservation outside the district.
Well, we had some people from the public who were not in favor of historic preservation overlays and this kind of thing, historic districts, who were there at the, at the special meetings, and so I was glad to hear their comments, and they didn't really have a lot specifically to say, but they wanted to hear. So I welcome anybody being there, because it does affect us all. Like you say, you might wanna buy this property here in the district. So what other questions do we have? What is the interest of the commission regarding this item?
I just wanna add also that this is just the first phase or first step of due diligence of what we're trying to do for the commission and the city. I know that we've had some talks with Dr. Van West at MTSU, and the city's pursuing a survey of older parts of Murfreesboro, and we're gonna try to get that started as soon as we can. His time and his students, we can, we can probably try to count on them to, to work in historic zone as probably the first phase of this survey, to show what we have on, let me flip the map over over here, it'll help. What we've been talking about is this first phase of, of survey would be the existing national registered districts that we have, plus the historic zone that we have, to do a re-inventory, if you will, just because it's, has been since 1985, since Dr. Row did at MTSU, and things probably have changed a little bit. Following that, there's some other parts of town that are old, as, you know, 50 years of age will enable you to become historic, and I follow that category, plus, there's areas south of Main Street, there's areas north of Main Street, the Mitchell Nielsen area is 50 years old and plus, Bellwood area is even old, that old. And it's not a bad thing, but.
Thank you.
But doing our due diligence, doing a good survey will just, is a good basis for the city to move forward to whatever we do, and it's good for planning. If, if something is, is coming downtown or in this area, a good planning tool to be, to refer to if we had a historic survey of, of the area. So that'll help just in general planning. So like I say, this is the first phase of what we're trying to do for the older parts of Murfreesboro, and, and like I said, Dr. Van West is, he's willing to help provide some, some manpower to this. So it's a plus-plus, because he's in, he's right at MTSU, so we're gonna do our best to see if we can get started this year, starting this, and probably other phases of this will be coming in the following years. It's not an overnight thing, but it's, it's what we need to do if we wanna pursue good planning and good historic zoning in the city.
And I think reviewing these documents has been a good thing for all of us to tidy up what we have been reviewing and making decisions from in the past, to make sure it's all current. So I think the effort that we made on this was, was time well spent.
I agree.
Yeah. I agree, Chairman.
So the, the process now is that if the commission approves it, it still has to go to Planning Commission and the City Council for final approval. Is that correct?
Public hearing first, and then.
Yeah. Well, even the Planning, Planning Commission would have public hearings and.
And probably three. There'd be a public hearing here, and then a recommendation of Planning Commission. Planning Commission, for sure, would have a public hearing on it, and I suspect council would also.
Right. But the, the meeting that we were talking about would be more of an informational meeting, a public hearing involving our group. Is that what you were suggesting?
Like a neighborhood meeting? Is that, are you saying like a neighborhood meeting?
Correct.
Or just an informational type meeting?
That.
We really hadn't planned on that. I mean, we can, but.
Whatever proper, I was just trying to say, whatever proper procedure is, I know we will have a public hearing at some point, and I'm not sure the correct process, but I'd like to make sure the public has an opportunity to come and hear.
If this commission's comfortable with this recommendation, I guess the first question would be whether you feel that you should wait for more of the commission to be present, and I'm not recommending that, I'm just, that is certainly, though, a question that you may wanna consider. And if you don't do that, then if you're comfortable with this as it is, I think that you would recommend approval and preliminary, at least approval, and recommend, and set the public hearing for our next meeting.
Yeah.
And then advertise it for our, our next scheduled meeting as a public hearing, and go forward, because your formal approval really wouldn't be until after the public hearing anyway. There may be some input that will cause us to all to want to change something or add something. So I think this next step would be to just to set it for a public hearing at.
Here in chambers?
Yes, here at our next meeting.
Okay.
And there were two other members. Gibb was at a number of meetings, and Linda was, and also Rick and Trelle, so other than Kurt and Mary May and Deborah, most of those were somewhat involved, and.
Again, I'm not making that as a recommendation that you wait, but that certainly is an option.
I think as a commission, we had a form of representation at various times there, so I think, I think holding it for that is not necessary. I think it'd be good to go ahead and move forward to the public hearing.
I move that we accept the recommendations and, and take the next step.
I would ask if you would, your motion would include David's modification at one and addition, taking that phrase out?
Correct. I would do that.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay. Any further discussion?
The only other discussion would be at the, the public hearing. Would we go through each change?
That would be the only way they would.
Well, I think we would.
Or have a official.
Certainly publish the, the compared document on the website, at least.
And we'll have copies up in the planning department for the public. If they wanna come and take a look at it, we can. We'll have copies for them to review. We'll go over each document, you know, a brief review of each document, you know, at the meeting before the public hearing, and to enlighten anybody who hasn't seen the, you know, the brochures or the application or, or that, you know, we wanna just let everybody know what we're doing.
Yeah.
So we could, you know, that won't be a problem.
I wouldn't see a need to start at the beginning and go through every, every change.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what I was getting to.
Yeah. Looks like there's some summary comments you could make. We changed this historic district to historic zoning throughout.
Right. We tried to, the part of it was to try to be consistent, because, you know, one place we call it a historic district, and another place we call it a historic zone, and then, you know, in the same document, we sometimes called it the Historic Zoning Commission, and we called it the Historic Commission, and we called it the Historic District Commission, and, and we called it the commission, and so at some point, I thought, well, wait a minute, let's just pick one.
Well, I think that, that kind of housekeeping.
Yeah, that's really housekeeping.
Is not really that of concern to them, but where we, like, we added chimneys should remain, or that you.
Right.
Should do other things.
Those substantive, we would certainly wanna mention.
Those substantive things I think we need to bring up, but the other things that are just sort of housekeeping, I don't see a need to do that. They're welcome to see it, but I don't wanna spend the time.
Do we wanna get together and maybe highlight before the meeting what we wanna go over, so we're not sort of stumbling around at the meeting itself?
We could have a, another meeting of a subcommittee to go over what we wanna highlight. That might be the best way to do it.
That'd be good. I just, we, you know, might expedite things during the public hearing, and not have this all here forever.
Well, I don't, if that's.
That's fine with me.
If we're on that committee, why don't we schedule another meeting of the subcommittee before this next hearing, so in a couple of weeks, we need to get together with the subcommittee and then have the public hearing at our next meeting to go over this.
We'll advertise it in paper. It'll be room, room 218, I guess. Is that okay with y'all?
Oh, sure.
Do you have a date? Can we pick a date now, or do we need to do that?
Well, I mean, we're just gonna talk about what we're gonna go over.
Yes.
At the public hearing. Do we still have to have a, go through all that?
We shouldn't, but I think we, to be safe, yes.
The wheels of the city government grind slowly.
They do. But we move at light speed compared to many others.
Okay.
Sunshine lodges, right there.
All right.
Well, we have a motion in a second to accept the changes as written with that one modification, so we're ready then to vote on this. All those in favor, then, of accepting the documents as written with that one modification, please say aye.
Aye.
Those pose, then they are accepted. Robert, is there anything else we need to go over today?
Did you wanna set a date for the public hearing? I mean, not the public hearing, but the subcommittee meeting? Or you just?
I think we need to check with David and Paul our schedules, and then we'll get with you, and we'll, you can publish that, and.
Did we, are we gonna set a date for the public hearing now, or is that?
At our next meeting?
At the, so it's gonna be at the next meeting? Okay.
I think that's fine. We can go through whatever items come before the commission in a normal fashion, go over those first, and then get into the public hearing portion of this, and try to make this a quick process. But I think you're right, if we highlight the things that we really need to focus on, I think that's the best way to make the best use of everyone's time. Do best. If not, then the chair would welcome a motion to adjourn.
First, I wanted to just thank you for your time and your effort, you and, and David and Mr. Cross, for, 'cause you went above and beyond Call of Duty and much.
Well, we were very glad to do it.
It was an exciting time.
Exciting. So I just.
You missed it.
I did, I did. I moved that we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.